Update PC 14-05. And we're going to have a staff report?
I'm glad to see this many people interested in the Sign Code here.
They're all going, "You're crazy." They're not here for the Sign Code.
So, thank you Chair Kidwell. Planning Commission, Staff recommends that the Planning Commission take public testimony from any citizen who wishes to testify on the Sign Code update and then continue the public hearing to the date certain of October 27, 2014.
Do you have any slips?
I do not. Is there anyone signed up for public testimony?
Anybody spontaneously interested in?
This part's going to be really, this is going to be very short.
If there's nobody here, I would move that we continue, oh, the Sign Code, to October 27.
Hold on, we might have some.
It was seconded.
Now it's coming to you now, so it's.
Can you take a roll call?
Oh, we can just say aye.
You want the voice phone?
Commissioner Hankin.
Aye.
Commissioner Espy.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gill.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Commissioner McGrath.
Aye.
Chair Kidwell.
Aye.
Thank you.
Zach, is your mic on? It sounded, okay, it just sounded really quiet.
He is quiet.
I know. But it didn't have the appropriate echo, echo, echo.
Make it echo next time, Zach.
That's right. The next item on our agenda is PC 14-112, the Willamette Falls Legacy Project Master Plan, CP 14-02, Zone Change and Text Amendment, ZC 14-03, Comprehensive Map Plan Amendment and Amendments to Ancillary Documents of the Comprehensive Plan, PG 14-01, and a creation of a Multi-Modal Mixed Use Area, MMA. I will read the quasi-judicial hearing script related to these items that I just read. Staff report has been prepared for this item and been made available to the public seven days before the public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to this application. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart on the wall. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out your address on the card so the city will notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversight poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open in response to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the consideration of the City Commission or Luba or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issues precludes an action for damages in circuit court. We'll now open the record for the files that I've just read related to the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. And first I'll ask, does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statements to declare? And since the last meeting, has any commissioner visited the site?
I would like to declare an ex parte contact. Last Monday night, I had dinner with George Kramer and Jim Nacita. George I have known for close to 30 years. He and I are advisors to the National Trust for Historic Preservation. A portion of our conversation involved the activities that the trust is involved in regarding the Willamette Falls locks, the designation of the Willamette Falls area as a heritage area, and of course, the Willamette Falls Legacy Project that we are working on. Our discussion with Jim specifically talked about tours we have taken of the site. I mentioned to them that I had been onsite when Publisher's Paper was still in business and subsequent to that when Jefferson Smurfette was in business and subsequent to that Blue Heron, and then again with the planning commissioners, also a tour of when it was Blue Heron. We talked about the articles that Jim had researched that were in the book that he presented to us in evidence at the last public hearing. We did not discuss any portion of decision-making, just about the history. We talked about Dr. McLaughlin's site. We talked a little bit about archaeology and whether or not, I asked whether or not he thought we might find something on the site where Dr. McLaughlin's house was, and his answer was probably not because it'd been scraped and built on over a long period of time. So that was the extent of our conversation. And I had submitted an ex parte contact form to Christina.
Very good. Any others?
Other than just a meeting with some of my HOA members, homeowners association, just telling them the excitement of what's going to happen here in the future and they should all learn more about it, and it's a great opportunity for Oregon City, that's about it.
Any others?
None to declare, but I would like to take this opportunity to apologize to the Planning Commission for my outburst last week, so, and staff.
What outburst?
You want me to bring it back up?
I thought you acted that way all the time.
I do, but I still want to apologize.
Apology accepted.
Does the audience have any questions for the commissioners' declarations that have been presented? All right, seeing none, we will proceed then with the staff report.
Thank you Chair Kidwell. Tonight, you'll notice on your dais additional public comment. There are two packages, one from Nancy Walters, an email that we printed out, as well as a collection of letters from students from North Clackamas School with the Technical Center. And so we've added those into the record. Some of them are related to the master plan and some go in more into the demonstration plans that were part of the vision report, but we're entering all of those letters into the record tonight. And that is Exhibit A. In your packet, in the revised agenda that was sent out on Friday, you'll find a memo with revised findings as well as the matrix. And that is intended to augment findings of the staff report through the discussions that staff had with the Planning Commission over these last two meetings. And it's anticipated those extra findings will be adopted as part of any motion tonight. So right now, we're going to forward this over to Ben Schoenberger and Mike Silas for the applicants. And then after that, the, George Higurkin and John Potter representing Falls Legacy LLC will speak, and then they'll bring it back to myself and I can answer questions from the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Ben Schoenberger. I am a planning consultant and a member of the consulting team for the project. And I'd just like to sort of, since this is the concluding meeting of our presentation about the application, just kind of like to take that 30,000-foot look and not delve too deeply into policy until the questions and answers, period. But I'd like to talk a little bit about the process because I wanted to kind of give a short history of how we got here, I mean, where we're at in this long process, this year-long process that leaves us here tonight and our place in it. And just to reiterate that the application that we have and the staff report and recommended list of conditions that we've developed to this point is not a typical planning process. It's not a typical developer-driven application. What we have is instead a product of a pretty deep and broad public engagement process that's been going on since at least July of last year. And it's essentially the collective vision of thousands of people that have gone into this, of interested citizens who are concerned about the future of their communities and about the future of the site. And I just wanted to touch a little bit about that outreach, is that there have been dozens of meetings and events, one of which we're showing on the slide here, that was a great event. If you include all the online comments as well as the in-person comments, thousands of people have contributed into this process. We had contributions from technical experts, the people on the consulting team with economics and archaeology and floodplain development and architecture, landscape architecture, the political partners, so the people from state and from Clackamas County and from Oregon City and from our various partners in the region. There's these community conversations, 45 of those, with 62 different civic groups, business groups, environmental groups. So we took all this information, we put it all together into a pile, and out of that we tried to develop a plan. And what we have produced is a regulatory approach that was, we keep talking about the balance. So it's a balance between flexibility and certainty and making sure that we were priming the pump, that we were encouraging new development on the site, but that we were also protecting the four core values that are important to the public. So it was a tightrope act, honestly. It was a lot of work. And every element of the plan that we developed had a little bit of that push-pull involved in it. It was kind of the result, whatever we came up with was the result of a debate between these two opposites. And just to give an example of the kind of extremes that we were dealing with when we were looking at making some of these policy decisions, is we heard from one side, a group of people that said, "Oh, it's junk. Just scrape everything and start over." You know, "There's nothing really worth saving there, just scrape it all away." And we heard on the other side is, "You should preserve every last structure on the site because who knows what is valuable and we don't want to take anything away for fear of making a mistake." And another example of that is we heard, and these are things that we'd really heard from members of the public and from citizens, "The whole site should be redeveloped as a nature park. The whole thing should be reestablished, riparian values should be restored all the way back to the railroad tracks, and it should be habitat restoration." And we heard from other people, no, what it should be is an industrial sanctuary. What we need is another major industrial employer to bring jobs back to Oregon City. So part of what we had to do was sort of find a middle ground between these extreme policy positions, and that's what we came up with. And during this process, we didn't have the owner that we have at the table now, and several prospective owners during that process came to the site, looked at it, looked at the planning process we were engaged in, looked at the constraints, the risks, and turned around and walked away. So then we arrived at a place with our current owner where we got towards the end of the process, the owner was on board, and we essentially handed him a more or less fully-finished plan and said, "This is what the public wants. This is what we've come up with, balanced by our own estimations of what we think is economically viable, how things can be protected." And we kind of held our breath. And he signed off on that application and saw the value of this process and the sort of bringing together the community that we had engaged in to get to this point in the long narrative that we're going through here. So I think that's unusual, and I just think we need to be clear that we're in a great bringing-together moment for the city of Oregon City and for the region. And I think it's due to this public process, and we're encouraged by where we've arrived and the document that we have and the decisions that we've made thus far. And we know that investment and success on the site is not a foregone conclusion. And I just encourage you to think about how it's better at this stage to open the door and then you can modify in the future if it's necessary, because virtually all development is going to come back to you. That there's going to be someone sitting here saying, "Now I'm going to show you this building that's going to go in this location, and it's going to be this tall, and it's going to be made of these materials, and I want this open space with the pathways going like this, and you're going to get to decide on all of that." So it's a lot, I think, easier to open it up a little on the front end and then make those harder, kind of tightening decisions down the road. We don't know what's going to happen here for sure. We can't predict the mix of new development, which uses will go where, how things are going to look, and that we also know that change is going to happen incrementally over a long period of time. And that's what we've tried to set up with this application. So with that said, I'm just going to say that I have faith in this process and where we've arrived at and in this plan and how the plan has made its way through the land use process thus far. I think it protects the city's interests and it reduces uncertainty for future development, and I'd encourage your approval. So with that, I'll hand it to Mike.
Something else to say? Well done.
You'll say it.
Well done. Again, it's Mike Silas, Walker Macy. I'm just really thrilled to be here tonight because of how much consensus, enthusiasm, and excitement that we've seen through this process. We work up and down the West Coast, many different communities. We've never seen a community come together like it has for this project. And it has to do with the conversations that Ben was just describing. There was a lot of debate, there was a lot of kicking around of ideas, and I think the plan in front of you is hitting the right balance. It really is providing what I believe the city and the community needs, which is the certainty about generally how the development will work, public access to the water, which is what everybody's looking for, and a revitalization of a major part of your downtown. And that's what this plan is talking about. It's also very importantly providing flexibility to the owner to be able to make it work. It's a very challenging site, and he's enthusiastic about the potential. But I would really caution this commission as well as future commissions to allow the flexibility within the plan to really work, because that's what it's going to take. There isn't a program for all those yellow blocks. There isn't a specific building height. There isn't a specific kind of mix of uses, but there is a real potential, and I would really encourage you to allow that potential to occur. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Potter, and George Higurkin's here as well tonight, and want to thank you for the opportunity to reiterate my comments from two meetings ago, two hearings ago. And that is, we support the plan, the rezone, as it's amended. We're excited about moving forward with this project. I think Ben and Mike put it well. Flexibility is critical because this is a very complicated project in terms of its delineation. It's got existing structures. George bought, and he'll mention this, I'm sure, bought the project, not because there was an opportunity or perceived desire, a plan to just start tearing buildings down. Those buildings represent a character that's with, and the intent is to maintain that character as kind of the brand for the project. It's got such a rich history that you want to take advantage of that. That's a reason for people to come down to this site. It's a, the intent is to make this a destination. And so from just a purely business standpoint, it's a good idea to retain that history and incorporate that wherever you can. I must say one thing, that developer, the term developer is somewhat of a misnomer. There's a lot of people that go into a developer's plans. That's, and the one I want to address this evening is the lending industry. They need predictability, they need, it requires some flexibility on our part as we prepare pro formas, we bring tenants to the table. There's a standard we have to meet in order to achieve the end result that we all want, and that's a destination project that is emblematic of what the vision is that you created in that vision statement, the four core values. The reason that that project was purchased was the work that you invested into this project, and that's what George saw in this project, and that's the intent to move forward with that. But the message I want to leave with you is, it requires some flexibility. For example, there are buildings that we know we want to maintain, and to the maximum extent we can, so long as it's financially feasible, retain as many of those buildings as we can. At the same time, there's floor plates that may or may not work, there's structural integrity that may be problematic. And so we're going to be working very closely with the city to make sure that we deliver what we, what our vision is and what your vision is in that vision statement.
Can I ask you a question? Is there a reason why he took his coat off?
I'm ready for this.
Are you?
You're back. Okay. I'm done. Okay. This is going to be easy. This is a project that.
Excuse me, can you state your name for the record?
Oh, George Higurkin, owner of the property and new landowner of Oregon City, and a supporter of all the ideas that have been coming out from all the advertising and everything about it. This is, is a special project. It's one that we can handle because we like this type of thing. We're doing Tumwater, Olympia Brewery, and some of those things, same thing, on the water, history, all of that stuff. But this project is special in a lot of ways because you've got a lot of public interest in it, a lot of public tenacity that's going to show up at every hearing, every meeting. We actually like that because, believe it or not, the older you get, you get a lot of good ideas from some of the things you don't even think about. And that's talking to the guys who do kayak tours, the guy, Portland General Electric, and their vision of what we'd like them to do. You always have to, in projects like, you have to ask, you have to, but more important, you've got to listen. And listening's a trait that's not very well taken anymore. But you've got to listen to everybody because the smallest one in the group can have the best ideas. This project is about history, the legacy, and also about really good ideas on how the effects of what you do influence the effects of what you get. It's really easy in projects like this to just go one direction and not think about it, no different than the intended walkway on the river and stuff. That's hugely important to the general public and to the folks of the project itself. We respect that and really like those ideas. We will be a participant in every single aspect of this project. Nobody's going to get around us without going through us, but we're smart enough to know that everybody is a player. And we like that. That's a good thing. The worst guy that has, wants to preserve something that's really difficult to do, we're going to try to do it. Whether it's the woolen mill or whatever it is, we're going to figure out a way. There's a lot of really good funding available for this project, and we're going to take advantage of every bit of that in reference to preservation and feasibility, flexibility as far as utilities, all the rest of it. We're going to make the project fit within the city of Oregon City, so it's a benefit to the city, a benefit to me, and a benefit to all the general public. The public is huge in this process, and we know that, and we also respect it. So there's going to be a lot of give and takes, but our position now is, we really intend to listen to everybody. We're not going to make any big moves on anything without the help of all of you and everybody else. There's no one more appreciative of the decisions you make than me, because I have to live with those decisions. At the same time is, we're not about settling for anything that has any effects that are not positive. We're looking for, that's why we need all the workability we can get from this to make it work. Every single item out there, historic, requires studies, requires funding, requires all those principles. And believe me, you've got a lot of folks out here that have a lot of ideas. We intend to chase every one of those down to find out if they fit and work. And from that, you'll hear from us. But we need to learn a lot more about the project. We know a lot now. We feel we're lucky to even be here. At the same time is, we'll talk with our pocketbooks and the way we work, and you need to know that. But we appreciate everything that's going on. We like it. John is really a good player on what he does as far as land use stuff, and I'm good in working with the general public of whatever we have to do. And we don't know the answers right now, and we don't want to know the answers. Give us three, four months, six months, and we'll have the answers to the problem at hand, not for the whole site, but we'll work through it. You'll hear from us, that's for sure. And the city already is, and we like that. We like the idea. This is a public process and an important one, and time is really not a consideration as far as, we want to move as quickly as we possibly can, but we don't want to make any mistakes on the way. And that just takes time. You've got to be smart enough to recognize it. And the workability of what you guys vote on is huge in reference to what we try to do on our end. So we're looking forward to working with everybody. We're looking forward to the general public and the rest of them. And we're getting letters on this project all the time and comments. Of course, the first thing is, what are you going to do with it? The answer, that's real easy, what do you want us to do? That's where we go. So you've got it from me, so that's where it is right now with us.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you, very well said. Appreciate your thoughts. Christina, did you want to come back to us with some information?
Well, I'm available to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have on the memo, the additional findings, and the matrix and the, with the revised agenda, I did provide for the Planning Commission members, standalone revised guidelines, and a standalone revised Willamette Falls Downtown District, and a standalone revised conditions of approval. And those are really the heart of what you're looking at tonight.
Yeah, I really appreciate the standalone revised conditions.
So then they didn't get mixed up with the other ones.
Well, and I want to go through 120-page document to read the last six pages.
You and the rest of the public. So I'm really available here to answer any questions. I think on a staff level, you know, I've, people have asked me, "How long have I been involved with this project?" And really, it's been the day after the site went into bankruptcy, and we have been involved for over three years. And I think, just to reiterate everything that Ben Schoenberger said, I think on a staff level, we really feel where we've landed is exactly what we need to see to give flexibility for the developer to move forward, try to find financing, making sure the lenders understand what's required, and then enough certainty, and also the bar that is raised to say, "This is what we expect from new construction and rehab on the site."
Are there questions for the staff at this time?
No, I'm ready to hear from the public.
I'm going to reserve mine for the end.
Okay. Then at this time, we will proceed to public testimony, and I have a number of cards. If you have not filled out a card and wish to speak, this would be a good time to go ahead and do that and give that to Christina. The first person to sign?
Why don't we just, we just ask when folks come up?
Why don't we just, we just ask when folks come up, they just state their name and where they live, whether it's in Oregon City or outside Oregon City. We don't need your address, that's on the paper. And we will just request that you keep your comments to about three minutes. So when you hear the beeper, you kind of know you need to start wrapping it up.
So as Tony just mentioned, we'll, we'll aim for three minutes. If, if you need to conclude your remarks beyond, I am going to set a timer for three minutes. But I, I think everybody understands that we're all working toward the same goal here to put this document together in a way that is beneficial for the public. So we, we do want to have testimony for the, from the public at this time. First person to speak is Karen Maury.
Good evening, I'm Karen Maury. I live in Oregon City. And I try not to go over three minutes, I don't want to hear that fire alarm. I've been watching the meetings, the last two meetings from home, and I probably am going to watch the balance of this one from home after a very long day. And I've been very interested in the presentations and some of the public comments. What's concerned, or where I stand, I guess, we'll just stick to my opinions. I support the plan as presented. I've heard several people give reasoned arguments and passionate arguments for maintaining every structure on the site. I thank George Kramer for clarifying, there are structures on that site that did nothing more than protect a machine which is no longer here. The, history is a fuzzy concept. History can be whatever you decide history is. To me, the history of this site is the first American settlement of the site. You had houses, you had stores, you had the first church, you had the location of the printing press for the first newspaper, you had the meeting place for the first Masonic Lodge. The entire life of.
The mint.
The mint and a very brief jail that somebody who didn't want to go to it burnt down. You had all of the city life in eight platted blocks and a little loose land to the south that was used for early industrial purposes, including sawmills, flour mills, et cetera, and the first attempt at a paper mill, which kind of was hit and miss. Some of those structures washed away in the 1860 flood, including George Abernathy's red brick store. I've enjoyed the, an argument or discussion about archaeology. I think most things originally were just sitting on the ground. Having toured the site, there's some deep basements there, so my suspicion is a lot of things have been dug out. I think this site has the potential to return to what it was originally, a vibrant community with opportunities to work, live, play, visit. In my opinion, the last three truly historic buildings on that site were allowed to be removed in the 1980s. Publishers Paper Company decided they were in the way. That was the Ainsworth Deardorff Warehouse, the Pope Hardware Store, the second floor of which was Pope Hall, which was the first live performance space in the entire city of Oregon City, AKA the Pope Opera House, and the Woolen Mill. However, as much as I resent the removal of the Woolen Mill, which as far as I can tell from the study, was a perfectly viable building, without its removal, you would never see how incredible the footings are. And I am pleased that from the very beginning, this plan has recommended maintaining those footings. Those walls are incredibly thick and astounding for what could have been built in the 1860s. Whoops, that off fire alarm. So in summary, I am completely in concurrence with the plan. I think the market will drive what goes on this property. But I think trying to force maintaining any buildings other than the ones that are specifically designate, excuse me, designated now, is false history, and I think it will prevent the development that we so deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Jesse Bus.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Jesse Bus. I do live here in the McLaughlin District. And actually, the month that my wife and I started looking for homes in Oregon City was the same month that Blue Heron declared bankruptcy. That was a huge impetus for us coming here, this site, the smell going away, the potential brought us here. So I'm, I'm full of enthusiasm. I don't know nearly as much about the history of the area as many others. But what I do know and what I'd like to speak about is the natural, natural resource component. I have training in the Endangered Species Act and Natural Resources Law. And I had an opportunity a few years ago to be the, I think, only person to read all 1,300 pages of the Willamette Project, which is through the Corps of Engineers Biological Opinion they issued in 2008. That document says that the National Marine Fish, National Marine Fisheries Service found that the salmon and steelhead runs on the Willamette River would be imperiled if by November of 2014, there weren't certain things happening on the ground at the 13 federally licensed dams in the basin. There are a lot more privately licensed dams, just the 13 ones run by the Corps and the Bureau of, Bureau of Reclamation. I know from personal conversations with members of the Corps that those will not be met. So come November, November of this year, we'll have a judge-approved federal district court opinion saying that these fish are over the tipping point. And part of the repercussion of that and what's already kind of coming through the, the pipeline, so to speak, forgive the pun, is that we'll need a lot more habitat restoration. There'll be more things happening on the ground, especially in the upper basin, to protect these fish because they can't get up or down from these dams. Fish ladders really aren't feasible, they're too high of dams. There are lots of other issues as well. But here, specifically, I'd like to talk about the, the water flow through the falls. There are two main mill races, I believe, that used to go through the falls that have been filled in. And there's a trickle through there, as I understand it. But if you look at the pictures, and I know all, all of you have been on the site many times, there used to be a lot more than a trickle. And who knows, the fish used to be able to get up there. But through the public comment period, which I was a part of, and I was not a proponent of making all of this natural area, I want to move to the area if I thought there wasn't going to be more economic force driving here. But the actual master plan, I'd like to draw your attention to page 39 if you've got it in front of you, talks about some key recommendations for fixing the tail races, as they're called in here, as part of the, you know, natural resource restoration. But what it doesn't say is that it's a requirement, and I realize this is a flexible master plan and anything subsequent has to be approved by the commission. But in particular, what stood out to me is that the table on page 39 uses the word "tail races" in multiple places and throughout the document. And technically, a tail race is just the water after it went through the mill. It doesn't include all the water before it powered the mill. The entire thing is called the mill race and the tail race. So I would suggest that, and this could be done tonight without creating more public hearings on the issue, you could simply add on page 39, and there are a few other places I've marked in the master plan, or if you added restoring mill races and tail races, not just tail races, that would include what I think was actually the intent of the public comment and maybe the intent of the commission, just not knowing better because of the, the use of the words, so.
Or we could just put an end of saying "tail race" refers to "mill races" also. And then it's just one correction and goes through the whole thing, yeah.
So, thank you for your time.
Had you submitted, had you submitted the documentation of what you were talking about tonight to the city?
Have not.
That would have been great to have been a part of it. Thanks.
The next person signed up to speak is Elaine Dorsett.
Thank you. My name is Elaine Dorsett. I live in Milwaukee. But I'm here representing the Oregon Archaeological Society. And first of all, I wanted to go on the record and state that the Oregon Archaeological Society definitely supports the zoning change. I believe I mentioned we were in support of the management plan, et cetera, last week, but I don't think I specifically said the zoning change. So we feel that the zoning change will allow the project to move forward and giving the public access to the site, again, has occurred both during the prehistoric period and the historical period, giving large groups of people access to the falls, so. And on beyond that, I want to follow up on some discussion of last week where the commission had, well, actually, I had been discussing advocating for some proactive archaeological testing at the site, which we feel will actually ultimately help with the development process rather than leaving everything to inadvertent discovery. And there was an inquiry from the planning commission in reference to guidelines for archaeological monitoring, if we could provide some information on that. And what we're working on that is synthesizing and summarizing projects that we are aware of through our members being involved in them, members who are specifically professional archaeologists for monitoring, archaeological monitoring. And we also will be contacting the state archaeologists for both Oregon and Washington and asking them to recommend projects that they felt were well-planned and well-executed so that we can also provide you with a summary of those projects. And we'd be happy, we'll give, providing that for the planning commission and also for the site owner and his associates if he would like that. And as far as guidelines for this specific site, when archaeological monitoring is imminent, then the owner will be hiring a cultural resources management firm in order to do that work, and they will develop a work plan that takes into consideration what would be the guidelines for this specific site. So that would occur at that time. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Amber Holwick.
Amber Holwick, at this point, I am wearing my Chamber of Commerce, Oregon City Chamber of Commerce name badge, and I'd like to speak on behalf of the chamber. Hopefully, you are all, as planning commission members, excited about your role in reviewing and hopefully soon approving the master plan for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. However, in the next breath, I also have to say, no doubt you are entering into this responsibility with a great deal of thought and careful consideration, and I wouldn't want to think anything else. After all, this is a Willamette Falls Legacy Project. So all of us that are at the table in one form, shape, or another, are helping to drive this legacy that will hopefully last for many, many, many years for our community and for our state. I'll tell you from the word "go" that this project was developing in one form or another. The Oregon City Chamber of Commerce and its Board of Directors have been exceedingly supportive of these efforts to, of course, preserve and honor the heritage there, offering the public access that we've all so wanted, and restoring the natural habitat opportunities along the river. And of course, the economic development potential that could in the end create 500 to 1,000 construction jobs, 500 to 1,000 jobs on the site, attract over 500,000 plus visitors, plus the ripple effect jobs of those per year, significantly boost property values, and of course, make significant impact on income tax. Now, I'm going to say that our chamber has been so enthralled with this and want to see this move beyond this stage and on to the final stage, to the end of the race, if you will. The highlight of every chamber board meeting is to hear the updates from our city manager, David Frazier, giving us an update in terms of where the Willamette Falls Legacy Project is at. The master plan before you was not developed on a whim, certainly much the opposite. And one size does not fit all. That's why you can't have a cookie cutter and expect a master plan to fit nicely in front of you and allow every specific building design identified. We have to have some flexibility. Key aspects are clearly present for those four core values. Main street being reinstated to connect to our existing downtown. And then certainly, respect for our areas and our state's heritage is part of that plan. I grant it's not as thorough as some may want. There are certainly viable and very interesting characteristics of existing structures there. But there's also significant financial investment and risk in identifying buildings that will not be disturbed, period, exclamation. So do provide that flexibility to the property owner to allow the market demand to fit within those parameters that are inside that master plan. It's flexible for a reason, and I appreciate your opportunity to hear from each one of us on this very important project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-oh, I think she's about to become a citizen.
My name is Amber Holwick, and I live just outside of Oregon City in unincorporated Clackamas County. And I'm very excited about this opportunity as a, I consider myself a part of Oregon City. And to watch this project go through a ver, an amazing process is very exciting. But as I toured the location, the thing that really struck me, one of the things that really struck me, and this connects with my roots, actually, as, as a sheep rancher, I really have a place for those woolen mill remnants. And if there's any way that those pieces absolutely are protected and incorporated into that scene down the road, I think is, is amazing. It has such bones and such character. And what I have found is that people today are moving so far away from the farm, so far away from the agricultural heritage that so many of our families knew. If we can just keep some shreds of those bones available, it might provide one more connection down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amber.
Changed, you changed roles very graciously there.
Different hats.
Very nice. The next person to speak is Jackie Hammond-Williams.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jackie Hammond-Williams. I have resided in Oregon City for almost quarter of a century. And for seven years, I've been the manager and director of the market, the city, the farmer's market. I did submit a letter on market letterhead a few weeks ago, and I thought I should come and just reiterate the comments that are in the letter. I think one of the comments has already been addressed, which I was delighted about. For the record, I would like to say that along with the Board of Directors of the Farmer's Market and myself, we are all incredibly excited, jumping up and down about this project and about our new owner and his comments about an active farmer's market. We would like to see that realization and look forward to working towards that. I would also like to say that the tours that the city staff put on were excellent. The market put together two tours of our volunteers and board members, and we were very enamored of the knowledge that the city staff had of the site. It was very educational. So the three comments that were in our letter, one was in reference to page 64 of the PDF, "The Proposed Zoning Prohibits Warehousing." But I understand that, that it is now a permitted, permitted and temporary use in the new, in the downtown district. This has been changed, am I correct in that?
It's permitted when it's associated with a permitted use. It is also a conditional use, and it can be allowed as an interim use on its own.
Okay. Because I did feel that, and my board feels also, that this would be an excellent site for light manufacturing or small-scale food processing. for light manufacturing or small-scale food processing. And so to have the ability to warehouse goods on the site, I think, is very important, and we don't want to close that door too early. So I was happy about that. The other thing is that flour, wool, and wood pulp and paper have all been processed at this site, and they're all byproducts of agriculture. And I was enthralled to hear Amber's comments also about agriculture is in our history, and it's very important that we, we can recognize that on this site. And I understand that the need for flexibility, I really do, because this is a tremendous site, and it's going to have great potential, and we don't want to bind the hands of the developer and the owner. I would like to make the comment, however, that I am from a country that really values its history and has worked hard to preserve it. We have precious little history on the west coast of America. This site is enormously, enormously important to the history, not only of the Europeans, but also of the native peoples. Thirteen or so buildings out of 55 are on, potentially could be on the National Register of Historic Places. I would really challenge you to look at those 13 and see if maybe we can't save a few more. If Jim Nacida's masterful work on the history of it is to be believed, the pulery or picking house is integral to the woolen mill. It was where they picked the fleece off the skins. It's not a very big building. I think it would be tremendous to be able to preserve it, and who knows? I know that Pendleton Woolen Mills, which I, who I worked for for seven years, I, you know, they weren't the mill at, at this site, but wouldn't it be marvelous to bring them back, and potentially, they could move into the pulery, and we could have a great interpretive display of agriculture and woolen fabrication? So, to that extent, I thank you, and just again, want to thank Christina and the rest of the staff for a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. The last person I have signed up to speak is Rick Williams.
Chair Kidwell, commissioners, my name is Rick Williams. I have had an Oregon City address for 55 years. I currently live in Redland area of Oregon City. I'm here to speak in support of the proposal as presented, and what's been phrased is flexibility. I'd like to bring a few things to the commission's consideration going forward. None of these require any of the strict adherence or, or any of the precautions that you laid out. One is economic development, another is the historic port district, another is historic use of renewable energy, and finally, connection with our historic land grant and sea grant university. My domain expertise for this is I was the paper boy on Main Street for several years, and that was very educational. Additionally, I have a degree in construction engineering from Oregon State, a 25-year career as a nuclear submarine captain, an MBA, and I am, in the spirit of full disclosure, I'm the regional director for a global systems engineering firm, so I'm going to couch it, couch the comments there. Oregon has a very vibrant special districts legislation. We could restore the historic port district. It would be the Willamette Falls Port District, combining the historic landing at Oregon City and the falls. If you look at the photographs in the presentation, there are several photographs of riverboats. Can you imagine a riverboat docking at the historic port of Willamette Falls, accessing the Oregon City side and using the then-restored Willamette Falls locks?
You're just looking for a place to park that nuclear submarine.
It's a little shallow. It's a little shallow. But I am a sea captain, and, and a port district is a wonderful thing. And there's a lot of funding and flexibility that goes with a port district. Secondly, the mill races, as was correctly pointed out, and the associated tail races, were used for renewable energy. The historic use of the lagoon and the mill races was renewable energy. I would commend to the commission to take a look at the water rights and see if the very complex water rights could be captured by the city of Oregon City, because they're currently undesignated, but the first, the Oregon City Electric Company had the historic water rights for the turbines, and those act, those turbine structures and the Blue Heron Turbine Structure would be appropriate for modern fish-friendly hydrokinetic devices, which I work with. So, water rights are very complex and important. The other thing is outreach to the land grant university. On the, on the Engineering College Advisory Board at Oregon State, there are decades of meaningful undergraduate, capstone, graduate, and doctoral programs, projects, and accomplishments to be had in Oregon City in the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. So an active outreach to Oregon State would do us all well. So, subject to your questions, that completes my comments.
Thank you very much.
So how does the renewable energy and re-establishment of fish runs work with each other?
Representative Debbie Boone and the Oregon Department of Energy are working with a company that I have no connection with, Renewable Energy out of Montreal, who could put fish-friendly hydrokinetic turbines in the structure at the Blue Heron site. In order to do that, the, the tail race would have to be restored there, but more importantly, as Jim Pyro from PGE said, it's all about the water rights, and it's all about the fish. So there are fish-friendly devices that could be put there to generate power to power the project using renewable energy, as was the historic use of those mill races.
Thank you.
That's an interesting idea.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to testify at this time? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting tonight. And do we, do we need to have some questions for the staff at this time?
If I could maybe just, real quick, in terms of the water rights and the mill race versus the tail race versus fish passage, we had the same idea initially. Let's re-establish these, these waterways, and we can have salmon coming up in between new, brand-new urban buildings. I mean, you may recall, when we, when we started the project, we, we had subgroups that were specialized in habitat restoration, economic development, and so that included not only conservancy groups and Autobahn, but also the state agencies or federal agencies that oversaw fish passage or Army Corps. And, you know, really, their perspective is, well, this wasn't a, these were not used for a fish passage historically. It was for power generation. And the second part of that is, you know, there's been a significant investment in the fish ladders and returns on the PGE side of the river, and that whatever we did in terms of restoring water through the property, we needed to make sure that it didn't detract or confuse the fish as they were migrating back up the river away from those fish ladders. So that's just one point. We've, we've gone around with Department of State Lands, Army Corps, ODF, and Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, and concerning, well, what can we do? And like many jurisdictions and many municipalities throughout the country, as we urbanized and industrialized riverfronts, we, we really kind of straightened those channels out, whether it be by putting riprap in or concrete structures. And what they really want to see is roughening the edges, they call it. If you look at some of the historic photos, before we started cantilever buildings out or putting fill in, the shoreline was very rough, with multiple areas where fish or lampreys that are migrating up the river could go into rest and essentially jump their way up the river. So that would be one response to some of the comments that we heard tonight. Clackamas County purchased the water rights from the bankruptcy trustee for this, from this property. We do have, we did sign an agreement with them concerning future use of the property. They acknowledged the historical significance of water and what it's played and the importance that it's had on this property, and that we would negotiate with them in the future for the re-establishment of water through the property as part of the project as it's developed. So the water rights have been, have been liquidated through the trustee process. There were almost 100 cubic feet per second of water rights. The Willamette Valley has not been adjudicated, so essentially, and it's probably not going to be, maybe in my lifetime it will be. For example, the Clamath Basin's been adjudicated, so you see water rights being divided out right now. How much of the historic water rights associated with the property are still valid claims is something we don't know at this point, but, so I just wanted to clarify that. So yeah, that, I think that's all I have right now, just based on what I heard so far. Hopefully, you did have a chance to review the work. Mr. Kramer, at our last meeting, kind of talked about how we went about and approached identifying each of the buildings and their significance on the property. It's not just about the age of the building, it's about the quality of the building, it's about the investment that's needed. You may recall, we had Matt Brown, who was here, who was essentially, he, he really was helping us truth what we were putting together, so it's something that can be implemented. So when you, when you take all of these factors, not just one individually, we think we've come up with a very good plan in coordination with the property owner on how to move some of these historic structures forward. With that, I will be happy, or our team is here to try and answer any questions that you may have.
Before you...
Questions? Yes, ma'am.
You can take questions now, certainly, but you'd want to let the applicant have an opportunity to rebut the evidence that was, the testimony that was submitted.
Thank you.
Before he closed the record.
So, before we close the, the record, does the applicant wish to have a rebuttal time?
Hi, my name's John Potter. Absolutely no rebuttal. Actually, we want to investigate what we heard tonight. There, as George mentioned, good ideas, if they can be implemented, we want to investigate that, work with the city to see if that can be implemented within the plan. Again, it creates the opportunity for interest for people to come down to the site, and the more activity centers, the more interest that we create within the design, the more successful the project will be. So we'll certainly be investigating all of those, all of the comments that were presented tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, at this time, does the commission have questions for the staff?
I'm just trying to recall from my tour a while back, but is there any mill race left, or is it pretty much lagoon to holly, then it's all tail race after that? I mean...
Not, not that we've identified.
Yeah, I thought it pretty much went straight into the holly building and then goes out through the site from there.
Yeah, that detail, the way the paper mill, over the last 30 years, they had their intake pipe that was brought in, and of course, there was just an octopus level of piping that came after that. They then had to take the water from the Willamette all the way back down to the water treatment plant, and then clean it, and then come back to the mill sites. And so, NRI Global, the company that was dismantling, they actually took all of that pipe. So there's a valve right at the PG dam.
Yeah.
And so, how those related, those pipes then utilized the existing mill and tail races, but as we get closer to the dam and, and what's blocked off, it was the pipe that came from the intake that then you took that water and then utilized those tail races in a, in an outfall measure.
Right. We've, we've heard references to kind of a wooden mill race coming in, but we haven't found anything yet.
Yeah, there's not a, and, and that was my concern, is there isn't a, a rock path that was built over or...
That we've identified.
And that's my understanding.
The dam, the dam that you see today is 1943.
Yeah.
And then there was a previous dam before that, and so then that 43 dam then intersected with some of the existing buildings. So the underground areas, you can imagine, is quite complicated.
Yeah. But I also think with the discussion we've had, that, that mill race slash tail race is the same thing for the purpose of discussion of, of internal waterways, I guess, for lack of a better term. If there's any, going to be any water passing through the site, it'll be using the traditional water paths as opposed to...
There's a little, a little different in that you can go below, let's say, paper machines two and three, and you can see where the water distinctly came out of the building and back to the Willamette, out the tail race.
Right.
You don't, we have not been able to identify or find any distinctive in the basalt path like that coming from above the falls to a facility. So does that make sense?
Right, you're, you're, the mill race portion of what would be, yeah, and, and I completely concur, I think. They, that got built over right off the bat, and they dropped power wheels into them, and, you know, I mean, you want to be at the top of the pressure head as much as you can, so, especially with water levels fluctuating, so, yeah, I'm not sure that there is any historic mill race left, but...
Exists.
Yeah.
We, we know the route, kind of, but, yeah, there's no distinctive, oh, it's obviously was right here.
Yeah.
I think there was a drawing that, that Walker Macy did that showed approximate location, re-establishing it, and that was related to my comment before about making some connection so that some water could continue to flow through the site.
But I don't think we're discounting, you know, I mean, if they start doing demolition and they find one, I mean, I'm sure they'll implement it because it's a feature, and so I don't know that we need to necessarily jump through.
Just to reiterate, I mean, any future puncture into the dam or conveyance into the dam, it may not use the same pipe that is currently that. So that's, that's why we're purposely keeping it quite vague, because there's a lot of additional due diligence that will need to be, be done to, to realize what we all want. But, you know, there's a lot of due diligence to get us there.
And it's going to involve the feds, because it's a dam. Those damn feds regulators.
That's right. Any other questions for staff at this time?
Well, I'm not sure where the appropriate time is to ask all the...
Jump right in.
...questions, or whether we're closing the public hearing and we can ask questions to staff, or whether we're keeping this open, what, what's...
Well, do you want to, us to make a decision?
Well, you can close the record, and you can ask questions if you'd like, or you can leave the record open and ask questions if you like, whichever you would prefer. I think the question is, are you going to take more testimony?
I, I, I'm...
I think we should close the record.
I think we're kind of done. Nope, wait, somebody's got their hand raised up.
Nope.
Are we prepared to take additional testimony?
Talk to staff.
Well, if we do, then we have to allow the, another rebuttal, so...
You do, but the rebuttal wasn't too robed.
That was a very lengthy rebuttal.
It was about the shortest rebuttal ever.
Chat with them, Christina, see what's going on here.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to just make sure we hear everybody.
Yep, I do, too.
Cut one guy off.
That's why, that's why Charles called, going once, going twice.
And, and, and I'm not anxious to cut the testimony too soon, but at the same time, we need to get to a point of closure and move on to make a decision. So come on up and identify yourself.
You can fill out the paper later.
I'm Brent Beoroff. I used to work at Bell, three months shy of 45 years. In regards to the water rights, that was the biggest reason that the Woolen Mill Building was purchased by Public Paper Company, is for the water rights. The physical building itself was a detriment to the company, because it was, in most cases, it was unfit to be used for anything other than light storage. When it was taken down, of course, the brick was sold and so forth, but it stayed, is still vacant, the, the place is still there. There was talk at one time of putting in another paper machine, but it was engineered and it, it didn't prove out feasible. But the biggest reason was, of course, was for the water rights. And if you could get underneath the street there and look straight south, if you had powerful enough light, you'd be able to see the other end of it where the water intake was, and the water come all the way through, down through the street, and eventually ended up in the filter plant there, which in turn was a sediment tank, basically, and, and when that was filtered, it was used within the mill. So the only thing that was actually used for city water was the drinking facilities part, but the... But the, the water rights itself was purchased at the time they purchased the Willamette Building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If only they had been more preservation minded, we might still have that building today.
So are we prepared to close the public testimony?
Ask if there's anybody else.
Is there anyone else that was just to testify?
Any further rebuttal?
Going once.
No, no rebuttal.
So...
Three minutes, and that's it?
Three minutes.
Yeah.
You want to say something again?
I, I, I think if fairness, we can't keep recycling.
There's an opportunity to speak at the city commission level as well.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
So we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and then I would open it to the commissioners to ask questions of staff.
I'll let Denise start.
Denise?
See what's left of my list when she's done.
You have a list? Well, see, I guess I will start with the Willamette Falls Downtown District Policies and Design Guidelines. I thought that what was put together was, was good, maybe a little too general, and specifically the section regarding materials. I think it says a lot and says nothing all at the same time. It says that they must be of high quality and express a permanence, I, you know, I think it's a little subjective. I know you talked in here about having materials that relate to the industrial history that are, you know, have some character to our area, but you know, time and time again, we see materials coming in where, some previous applications where we get stone that has nothing to do with this particular area, it definitely looks somewhat suburban. I'm just wondering if you could put something in here that says such as?
Well, I can respond a little bit to that. There was a, going back to Ben Schoenberger's comments, there, there was a lot of looking at best practices of design guidelines and where, you know, commissions of other jurisdictions of the projects have kind of tied into details. And there has been times where you say, you know, allowed material shall be brick, concrete, I mean, because if you were going to give me a list, I'd say uses that are traditionally in the industrial or downtown would be basalt, brick, concrete, right? Those are probably the obvious three. Problem is, when you do that, you have really constricted the creativity of the site, and there very well may be opportunities on this site where a fully glass curtain wall structure may be very appropriate. And we don't want to pre-prescribe, this is not an historic district, we're not doing that traditional compatibility materials historic district, we want to make sure that we have created a place that has high architectural quality and meets everything, but not to the point where we selected those three materials, you know, or the materials that you would kind of roll off that would make sense.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that we're going to be prescriptive. Again, as, as someone who's dealt with this all of their professional career, there's two sides to every story. I understand the need for flexibility, but I also understand the need to be, to have clear and objective standards, and that's what I'm struggling with, because I see both sides of this. I, I don't want to be in a position to where we're getting someone coming in and saying, well, this is a high-quality material, and maybe I think it's not a high-quality material, and you know, who's to say who's right?
Right.
I mean, that's, that's part of the thing that I'm struggling with, what, what I'm, I want to be proactive about it, I don't want to sit up here and be reactive, and that's, that's where I'm having the, the difficulty, because someone's going to come in and say, well, what do you think? And then I have to react.
Right.
I mean, I say, we have to react, and I would rather, you know, again, as I mentioned last week, if they don't, people don't come in here with something that they think is appropriate, as I said, you guys are going to give them the stink eye, and you're going to tell them, you're not going to, the planning commission is not going to be very favorable towards this if you come in, so I mean, I, I would do that when I was staff. And you know, nine times out of 10, I'd be right when they'd come back and say, well, we're going to try, and then the planning commission would shoot them right down, and I, you know, you don't want to say, I told you so, but, so again...
Bet you did anyway.
No, I didn't. I let the commission do that, that was their job. So what I'm looking for is some balance somewhere, and I'm, I'm thinking, this is just my opinion only, this is a little bit too much on the, it's a little too loose, you know, and again, as you know, I'm used to dealing with the design guidelines in our districts, and we're talking about these things, although I think that there's a, there's, I think there's a little more room to, to slide it a little bit this way without going too far to saying it has to be this, this, or this. Again, I don't know about a curtain wall, I'd have to see it, you know, I'm more visual.
Just one more response back, I mean, your concern was not, I mean, we had not, we had also thought about that, that, that issue. Is this, is this more detailed? And I think what we really rested on is that condition of approval, is we see the balance of this design group that's going to help you in the future, that are going to be that, that detailed design background, architects, landscape architects, planners, who will be able to help you articulate why that stucco building may not be appropriate, or why it does not fit into the downtown, rather than kind of, what we were concerned about was being too prescriptive in materials.
Christina, I look at this as being kind of a comprehensive plan document. So when we're looking at goals and policies, we have goals that are, that, that don't specify, like if you're going to write goals about doing design review, you write a goal that says, that has a kind of a vague reference to the type of character or feel that you want to get, and then when you write your design review code, then you write all of your, all of your criteria and all your clear and objective standards. So I liken this to the comprehensive plan, and then when I get to my individual buildings, which are all different, I think it'd be kind of difficult to specify, you know, materials for each individual building. I think that you really do have to look at it on a case-by-case basis in this, on this site. It's a unique site, it's not just a downtown site, that's...
Christina, is this a design review committee board, is that going to be created by ordinance, is that going to be separate from the, the ordinance that we operate under quasi-digital and, and standards and things of that nature?
We've created a condition of approval that kind of lets us work on this next year to try to really figure out what the next steps are. We've allowed two options. One is an option that just has ad hoc additional planning commission members that are, have backgrounds in design. And then the other option would be to have a, a design committee that would be put together, either pro bono or through a stipend, that would really, in a sense, play staff's role, prepare a very detailed report, and go through and provide, really help you do your job. So there's really two opportunities.
I agree with what Denise is saying, that it can't be too vague, so that there are no standards, but Paul is saying that it's got to be part of the comp plan, which is, which is in and of itself general. So I'm looking for standards that would stand up in court, so that they wouldn't be, depends on what side of the bed you got up that morning, as to whether or not the applicant was going to be throwing this, you know, spaghetti, or is he going to throw...
But, but you're saying we're getting another bite at the design apple on this?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking back at guideline number five, which says build, build for long-term use. So I, you know, I looked at that, and I, I don't disagree with it, but again, I think it could be interpreted in many different ways, and I, again, I, I apologize, it's just...
Yeah, I, I mean, to kind of side with Denise about this, it would be historic to use corrugated metal, because that's 60, 70-year-old buildings, they're still there, and I know Quonset huts that have been around since World War II, and they're still perfectly selling...
Yeah, I'm not saying that I would, I don't, I don't think that's incompatible.
It might be appropriate.
Yeah, it might be appropriate.
In some applications, it might be appropriate.
Yes, I would totally agree, I mean, I would agree, I don't know how.
So you've got to have the flexibility to be able to incorporate that kind of material. There are materials out there that these guys are going to think of that we may not be able to specify here, and I, I don't want to hamstring them into not being able to use them.
Well, I think there's a couple of things that...
And I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, open up the whole barn, but I'd also...
You know, I, I think it...
At this stage...
You're right, and she's right.
Oh, no, it's not, it's not wrong or right, it's just, I'm saying it's...
And it's, it's all based on the fact that this plan is probably not going to be implemented for 20 or 30 years.
Right.
So...
I hope it's sooner.
Well, it would be nice, and if, if George can come up with the financing, maybe it moves along in the next few years, but I'm just saying that these standards need to hold up over whatever amount of time it takes for them to be developed, and I don't think we can predict what materials are going to be appropriate 10 years from now.
Yeah, I mean, just look, 25 years ago, Hardy Plank didn't exist, and Louisiana Pacific siding was the best thing on the market.
And we all know that it wasn't.
And Apple may come up with some new material.
Before, before Tony says anything, I just want to point out, Denise used the term clear and objective, which has a legal meaning with regard to needed housing, with regard to goaltend. This is not a needed house, we have determined that the city does not need housing, so this is not needed housing, therefore, we do not have to have clear and objective standards. That's why these are not clear at all. So just so, covering myself, I'm telling you, I understand, these are not clear.
I am not using it in that context, so, for the record, I'm not talking about needed housing, I'm not talking about it from, from that standpoint. It's, again, I don't know if there's a solution, I'm just expressing the conundrum that I find myself in and trying to, you know, to see how these would be implemented, you know, if I, you know, if I put on the crown and I'm, I'm in charge, sure, I can tell you what I think is a quality material, and I can tell you what I think might be a, you know, future appropriate development, but that's not the job that I'm going to have, so...
And I, I hear exactly what you're saying, because if I was sitting over on the other side of the table, I would like to know, coming into the game, what the, the boundaries are before I start, and if somebody says, well, no, that's not acceptable, I'd like to say, well, where's the boundaries? So I understand exactly what you're saying, but the danger of establishing fixed boundaries also may limit what somebody can do, that it would require us then to, to say, okay, we're going to make an exception for that because we like it.
I, I think it's easier to have a, a standard and then change it, as opposed to having less and then making it more, and I, you know, again, I have the greatest respect for you, Ben, when you said, well, we can go along, I'm not quoting you exactly, and then we'll have a, we can change it later, and I'm just like, okay, later? And my heart started racing because I'm thinking, okay, do I want to change it later, or do I want to change, do we want to change it now? Again, it's that whole balancing thing. I, I understand, you know, where, where this is going, you know, there's going to be more specificity, which of course is, you know, for those of us wonky people, we like that. So let me move on to the next thing, which is...
If I could, before you go to the next thing real quick, we, we went round and round on this, at the staff level.
I know you did.
Right now in Oregon City, we have clear and objective standards for our site plan and design review, so a commercial building comes in, we tell you it needs to be 60% transparent on the front facade, it needs to be 30% transparent on the side, you have to have a 2% offset every 30 feet. It's, it, it's not a good way to do it. You want to be more into a form-based code on a site this complicated. So we tried to build in the expertise, whether it be at the staff level, with assistance from folks who would specifically be working on materials and design and integration of building to the public realm, or whether it's on this board, supplementing this board for specific applications that come out of here, to allow that, that certainty from these policies and, and all the data we've put together, and the information that we've put together are going to be used for your justification to say whether it's compatible or not, versus trying to say, okay, it can be ABC, or you can try and veer off from that if you really come up with something great. It's really, really hard to do on a site like this.
Can't this be, pardon me for interrupting, but can't this be associated with another ordinance creating this design review board, where they have their own standards that refer back to the comp plan? They implement the comp plan that we're adopting tonight.
Right.
And, and they, and let them report to us as to what their, what their thinking was, based on some standards that, that they develop, or we develop when that, that ordinance is, comes before us for, for the, for the commission consideration.
We were really just trying to, you know, the next conversation is how do we set this up, not necessarily, does it have additional standards or policies, we're trying to use what we have here. You know, the second thing that could happen is that the applicant decides they want to come in and refine this even more. Maybe they want to come in and say, here's design materials, here's the theme of what we're going to do, and maybe the commission approves that, and it's like, as long as you use these materials and these concepts, it can be done at the staff level. So there's a lot of ways that this could shake out, but in the end, it has to come back to you. And, and I understand where Commissioner McGriff's coming from in terms of, is there enough policy teeth for you to make a decision, especially if it's contrary to what's submitted? And, you know, with the amount of data and information that's been put together and the, and the policy documents, you've got a lot of flexibility there.
It's, it's just the old age struggle of, you've had, you've had these discussions in-house, I know this, and that's what I've been struggling with, but...
You know, we've heard folks who want brand-new, you know, you could have very modern, that complements buildings, folks have used Granville Island as an example. Hard to put Granville Island into clear and objective design standards.
And that's exactly the example I used last year when we were going through this, that, that site is a perfect blend of existing reuse of buildings and materials, complemented with new materials. And, you know, I would just say from my observation on this particular subject, is if a building is being renovated or repurposed, we're going to know if it's compatible, I mean, it's just going to be apparent. You'll look at it and you go, that doesn't fit, or you'll say, wow, that's, that's just great. And I, I don't think you have to have a, a prescriptive path for that, you, you'll just know it's, it's the right thing. New buildings may be a different story, but in all the existing buildings, you're going to know if it's appropriate or not.
Well, I hope that's going to be good enough.
Next issue.
So getting to your conditions of approval, the revised ones, the number five and number six, there was a suggestion made at the last two public hearings regarding, a suggestion even by the consultant about possibly putting some of the other buildings that were listed, mentioned in purple, as opposed to not being purple. And in looking through all the material that we've had, I've come to realize that many of the buildings are integrated to one another, particularly from the tours that I have been on. So it would be very difficult in many instances to take one and separate it from the other one without some loss of integrity. So I understand that from a standpoint of my minimal structural background and how buildings get put together. I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but if they were on a secondary list, I don't feel that that would be such a bad thing. Under number seven, you have here removal, and I had, I had a question from last time too, so, buildings for, of structures or elements not identified for retention will be processed as a type one action, which means that's a staff review, is there public What, what are you seeing as the process for that?
Exactly that, I think that, that what we, in this balance of flexibility and certainty, we've identified in condition number five and six, the minimum level of structures that need to be retained for authenticity to the site, letting the developer move forward to determine what structures need to be removed and what structures are going to be redeveloped. And it made absolutely no sense to require a building that was not going to be regulated to have to come back to the planning commission for a review. So we've said, they can come through for a type one decision, now they need to meet the conditions of approval, so those intensive level surveys need to be completed before demolition permit can be released. So any condition of approval that's, that is being triggered by that demolition permit will... will need to be met before staff can release that permit. But this is a very specific reason why we, why we did this, as we said, in that flexibility is, we need to provide enough flexibility that the developer can move forward, look for financing, and have not be held up by a potential future planning commission hearing that need to review a demolition permit, knowing that we don't have a criteria for denying that permit, because we've not identified those as our minimum requirements. So there, there was a specific reason why we moved for a type-one remove, review.
A type, a type-one review is done by staff, it's an administrative review, it's not, it's not, and it's, it's not appealable to the city commission, it's appealable to the Court of Appeals.
Okay. So in light of testimony and the, the large amount of public interest, how would someone who is not located within three hundred feet for that notice be able to be informed about this, should it happen?
Well, there is no notice for type-one. We are going through the process here in the master plan project to identify the minimum level of structures to be retained, so we've identified these. All the other structures were left off the list for many reasons that both Matt Brown and George Kramer put up, talked about last week.
Okay, yeah, I'm asking about a public process.
There is no public process for demolition, because it's getting tied back to this approval. And what we're saying is, this, this is the public process that we're going through right now, to identify the minimum level of structures.
So right now, they could go in and tear down the old post office, and that's up to you, the two of you, and the first thing anybody would know is, when a bulldozer starts knocking the building down.
Correct.
And that's what you're setting up.
No, I just, I just want to.
Yeah, I just wanted on, I just.
After it's, after it's documented.
After, after all the condition approvals are met that are applicable.
But condition number nine is, is applicable prior to that.
Correct, correct. So that is what I'll be looking for. The developer may come in and just do all of them, right, you know, there are many ways can do it. One option is, they do all of them, turn into SHPO, it's all pre-cleared, or we wait for each one. Or they don't do any demolition for years to come.
Sure, okay, so I just, I just wanted to be clear on the record that there's going to be no further opportunity for anybody to say anything about it, period. So what if, based on the intensive level survey, you find out some information?
Well, and what we said is, the intensive level survey is provided for documentation, but what we've come to understand is, every single building that is left off of this list was left off for a reason. It was left off a lot of times for its structural ability, or if its ability to have a, a new adaptive reuse opportunity, and we felt that those buildings were best left for the market to determine their adaptive reuse significance.
Okay, so humor me.
Yes.
What if information is uncovered that is something that we had not anticipated, that's significant in some way to the development, prehistory, posthistory, settlement, what happens?
Well, we have our.
No, no, let me take that back, what could happen, I'm not wanting to bind you to a future action.
So, of course, we have the archaeological condition of approval, so are you, so what you're talking about is something not archaeological rated, is more of above-ground structural?
Could be all of the above, we, we find out something we don't know.
Right, well, the archaeolo, archaeological condition is related to, if there is found that there's an archaeological site, they will consult with SHPO about the next best steps, that's below ground. Above ground, there's a point where if the intensive level survey finds out something, it doesn't change the structural stability of the building and its ability to be reused. So a developer's still going to have to make that decision, based on whatever they found, can this building reasonably be rehabbed and be able to have, to, to have a pencil? That's not going to change regardless of what is additionally found.
That may change the developer's mind about what he chooses to do with it.
Absolutely.
But it isn't something that you as staff can say, timeout, you can't demolish this building anymore, you can just say, thank you for the documentation.
And that's kind of where we've come with this decision, is there's a point where we as a, as a planning commission, city commission, can only do so much, and, and I think.
There's fifty-two buildings, we don't want fifty-two hearings.
Right, well, and not only that, but there is a bookcases full of great intention plans that never get built because of people's great intentions and hope and wish. And what we're trying to do is, we're being very realistic about this site. What we've learned over the last three years is, this site is simultaneously awe-inspiring and exciting, but also incredibly complicated, and we have to be going into this with our eyes open, and that is what we've set up this process to do.
Well, if we want to choke this thing to death, we can do it, we can over-regulate it, and I think it's in the process of heading towards the emergency room anyway, in this economy that we have, because that's, that's the gorilla in the room, we don't know, and we can't regulate that. And every planning commission that I've ever worked with wants to be in control, and they just can't give it up, and that's human nature. That's not necessarily a planning commission, that's just human nature. I think somewhere along the line, we just got to use that formula word, trust. And I, we could be here.
Trust.
That's why I'm a Marine and not a Navy man.
So, don't, don't get me wrong, Commissioner Mahoney, Bob, I'm asking the question so that it is on the record, and it's perfectly clear, because I have been asked these questions, and I can't answer the questions.
Don't, you get me wrong, I'm just responding to both of us being right.
It's not, it's not about being right, so.
I think it is, it is.
Number, let me, I got one, I got a few more, so number thirteen, I'm hurrying up, so number thirteen, can you define, just for the record, it says, so I'm going to go dash, 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 so disturbance of native soils, what are we talking about in terms of native soil?
I'm taking this from the, the discussions I've had with SHPO, which is disturbance of native soil is, and I'm, this is quotes here, you know, are you disturbing more than a bucketful of so, of native soil? And that's generally, you hear the trigger go off when you do more than that.
Again, for the record, number thirty, which used to be the old number twenty-six. We have, I've had some discussions in my neighborhood about a previous project where a proposal was made to bring a facility, let's just say that, from one point to another point, without any discussion about how this would happen, of course, there was no financing, but I just want to make sure that this isn't going to get rammed down somebody's throat without total review. I'm a little concerned that it would be proposed to be in the TSP, because the more documents it has, people come in and say, well, look, it's in the TSP, that means we can do it. I'm not sure if this is a good thing or a bad thing, I'm not making any value judgment about it at all, my brain goes to, what are the unintended consequences? We have a little bridge right now, it doesn't affect the adjoining neighborhood at this point in time, I'm not sure, there's no definition as to where this would be, where it would land, whatever, I just want to make sure that this doesn't get memorialized in stone, and when I'm eighty-five, somebody says, oh, look, it's in the master plan, we have to do it.
Well, the, the one thing I'd say about that is that it, it does indicate that the location needs to be planned for.
Well, that's what we were told before, it's, the location needs to be planned for, and then we were told, you're going to get this in your neighborhood whether you like it or not, and then, it, well, it didn't happen, but I just, I just want to make sure.
So the process works.
Yes, I just want to make sure that there's going to be a process that we're not, this is not pre-clue, that this is not absolutely have to happen, without a whole lot of things happening way, way before that.
Well, this project can't even happen until the Riverwalk is, you know, designed and paid for, that's our number-one goal, so I'm excited if this ever comes, because that means that we have a vibrant place that we need to connect to, so that's exciting. The TSP is in there mainly because it's to allow us for future funding, very important to be in the TSP for that, and if this is, if this will be a detailed development plan, because this bridge will be on the site and it'll be a development project, and it'll be part of a detailed development plan.
No objection with it being on the site, I'm concerned about where it comes on the other side.
It'll be a site plan and design review, which will be, well, the detailed development plan will come to the city, so most likely, I'm thinking on my feet here, but it'll probably all one site plan, that'll be related to both the master plan and then on city property.
And a particular building that it might connect to.
Which we don't know any of those details yet.
And the TSP also allows us to identify funds to actually do the planning work.
Yeah, that's what, that's what she said, I, again, I, I just want to be clear that I'm not objecting to this, I'm just concerned that it gets memorialized, and then it ends up in the McLaughlin neighborhood, and then the next thing we know, we have parking lots, like I said.
It's the only place it could be, is the McLaughlin neighborhood.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm not saying it may not be appropriate there, you know, we already had, as I already said, we already had one proposal come through, and we were told, you know, to basically shut up about it, and.
I think one nice thing about this plan is, I feel like I'm the torchbearer for transportation demand management, as long as I work in Oregon City, I'll say those words every day, because that is, it's not the land use, it's how do we work on utilizing the existing parking we have in a way that can proactively help this site, and so that is exactly, it was, how can we use a transportation demand management program, both downtown and up in McLaughlin, to make sure it's not adversely affecting the McLaughlin neighborhood, but also at the same time, recognizing church parking, nights and weekends, how can we work with churches and religious organizations to do that?
VFW hall.
Yeah, if, how do we take our existing parking that is being underutilized during some times to help find, you know, and, you know, use every inch of every parking lot to the extent where it's supportive of the redevelopment?
Do you have more?
Nope.
Are we ready to make a decision?
Nope, somebody else can have Damon's vet list.
I got one question, and then we can sally forth.
Sally forth?
Yeah.
Sally forth.
Item nine, in the same list of conditions, if I scroll up, I love this thing, yay, for touchscreens.
The one that says prior to demo?
Right, it says prior to demo of any structures identified as potential eligible for listing in the National Register, where is this list of potential and not potential?
So that was submitted in an early exhibit, in I think the first hearing, and as early as 2012, we worked with the State Historic Preservation Office to update George Kramer's 2002 study, and they provided a list of the buildings that are potentially eligible, and that's kind of what you work as, everything's potentially eligible until it's actually at the keeper and it's stamped listed.
So it's a September twentieth, 2012 letter from SHPO, which, thank goodness Jim has a copy in the, so, okay.
It, that's already in the record, and is part of the.
Yeah, okay, that's, just wanted to make sure that, that there is a list in existence prior to us going forward, okay.
Are there any other questions from the commission for staff?
Let's make a motion.
I would just feel a lot more comfortable.
Are we going to have a time to make comments about this, other than questions, or is that after that we make the motion?
After we make a motion.
Cool.
Do you have a comment or question? Christine, I guess, I apologize, I just need to go back to number thirty, I just would feel a lot more comfortable, I know I'm not here representing the McLaughlin neighborhood, I'm here representing the city as a whole, but I've had a number of people have made comments about this particular thing that I've heard secondhand, and I just, again, I just, again, it's just the way my training is, it's unintended consequences, I don't care if we use parking lots of churches and other things, I know people's habits, I just don't want to see adjoining neighborhoods being inundated with unnecessary burdens on them that, that don't have anything to do with where they live, and how they live and have homes, that's, that's the big concern that I have there.
Well, and my counter to that is, there's already a pedestrian bridge that was used by hundreds of mill workers to go to and from the bluff, that's why it's there, and so, you know, if somebody wants to be all upset about the airplane noise because they moved next to an airport, well, gee whiz, you're, you know, that's, that's the same situation, there used to be tons of traffic, hundreds of people a day went back and forth, you know, right over the little South Bluff Road and down across, now became the parking lot, and across that bridge and went to work. And, you know, the other issue that isn't discussed in this, but basically to me tells me that the, that the bridge is going to be in exactly the same location, it just might be updated, is, you got to get permission from Union Pacific to go over their tracks.
Absolutely.
So, you know, you, there's, you already have permission there, and, you know, trying to do it some other location, and practically, where could you put it without it being this huge, ungodly tower sticking up out of the middle of the, of the, of the, the site, which is exactly what we've expressed we don't want to see, so.
My experience in working with Union Pacific is that, if you approach them correctly, they are very easy to work with, if you don't, they will shut you down really, really fast.
Well, you know, I, I think on this particular issue, that I feel comfortable that the fact that it's, there, there is no current trigger for this development requires that it come back to us for approval before anything happens. So somebody's going to have to come to us with the plan and say, here's what we're proposing, and at that point, we have an opportunity to say, no, that doesn't work. So, there, there's nothing built into this plan that says that they are entitled to do this.
Well, I, I just want to make sure that that isn't entitled.
Well, and I, I think we've established that it's really not.
That's, that's my only concern about it.
I think that, yeah, we have opportunities.
So, are we prepared to take, make a motion?
Okay, I make the motion then, if nobody else is going to, that we adopt or approve the, do we need to say, what's right here, PC fourteen dash one-one-two, Willamette Falls Legacy Project, do I go further with the master plan?
You, you should recite all of those.
Okay, master plan, colon, CP fourteen dash oh-two, zone change and text amendment, ZC fourteen dash zero-three, comprehensive plan map amendment and amendments to ancillary documents of the comprehensive plan, PZ fourteen dash oh-one, and creation of a multimodal mixed-use area, MMA.
With revised findings as.
With revised findings, correct.
And we're not talking about mixed martial arts.
And revised findings and revised conditions of approval, second.
And will the, the matrix and all of that other stuff be as attached?
All included in the additional findings, absolutely.
Tom, I didn't feel bad about asking you to read that since I already had to read it.
So how do you practice in front of the mirror, that's how you do that.
Well, it's my public speaking.
So, discussion, do we have discussion about this?
Okay.
Here's your comment.
Well, that's the first, in, in my year and a half on, on being on this commission, that I've actually made a motion, so.
You made one about four months ago.
No, you made motions before.
No, I, I move, I make motions, but I never verbalize them.
They made history doing it.
Well, the reason I, I wanted to say that is, I've been making notes to myself tonight because I know there's been a lot of really detailed discussion over the last few sessions, and I, I just wanted to say I've been incredibly impressed with the public input, and more recently, the citizens' comments that have been made before this commission, and I appreciate the thoroughness and the detail that our planning staff has done in preparation for this process, I mean, this staff here has to be completely congratulated on the, the detail and the amount of thought that, that's gone into this has been incredible. And the reason I say all this, we've been, I've heard from Amber tonight about roots, and I've heard about history, I know, I think the only person in the room who's ever heard me say this is Doug, but we're here at the end of the Oregon Trail, and my great, greater great-grandfather was at the beginning of the Oregon Trail, St. Joe, Missouri was his settlement, and he named it after his patron saint, and he used to outfit the settlers as they came across the Missouri River to come along the Oregon Trail, that was just one of the starting points, like independence. Since that great time, his descendants have saved many of his historical areas, they have Rubidoo Plaza, his name was Joseph Rubidoo, and my grandmother's name was Marie Rubidoo, one of his eleven daughters, and it's great history that they've saved there, Canary Row, they have Rubidoo Plaza, so I feel like I'm in the right place at the right time, and very proud to be a part of planning what we can do here at the Blue Heron, so I'm wholeheartedly in support of this project, for my descendants and for my ancestors.
Damon?
I've got nothing to say, I'm ready to vote.
Let's hear about your descendants.
Well, they came to the Sandy Plateau and were run out by a scrupulous, unscrupulous land baron, so they went home, and it was another forty years before they came back. People kept having accidents, or who didn't accept his, his offers. having accidents or who didn't accept his offers, so they chose to leave.
Denise?
Well, I just want to say, I've told her in person, and I want to say publicly again, that Christina Robertson Gardner has shouldered this with a lot of finesse. And I know there were days she probably pulled her hair out, and for all we know, that's a wig. She may have lost her mind several times and thought, why am I doing this? But I think the, I think she has, she has had the support of the community development director. And so she's proceeded, sort of, to jump into this pond, not knowing, you know, whether there was going to be a life preserver on the other end, or whether, you know, you could sink or swim. But she has really, it's a lot of work. And I just want you to know that I totally know what you've gone through. And it's just been, I think it's one of those things that planners dream of being able to work on a project like this, and you only really get one shot at something really amazing like this. And I, again, I hope it doesn't sit on the shelf, because I know in your office, you have a lot of plans that sat on, are on the shelf. And I found another downtown plan for you that I looked at it last night and I said, oh, I've got to bring this in for Tony, because I know it probably was on the shelf. So I really, again, I want, you know, I want to take my hat off to you, because, you know, personally and professionally, I have a lot of admiration for you. I know I ask a lot of crazy questions, but, you know, it's not questions you haven't already asked yourself as someone who's in the same profession as myself. I, again, I want to repeat what the public said, is that we only have one chance to get this right. So we're gonna, you know, muddle through this. Maybe not this commission, but other commissions are gonna struggle. But I think it's going to be worthwhile in the end. And I do support this. I, you know, I know that some of the community members that have told me that they were coming to testify, or they sent comments. Not everybody got everything they wanted, but I think the needle has been threaded adequately. And we have a good record. And I think, you know, those of us that plan to be around when we're 85, will go back and say, back in 2014, we did this, and this is what we should do. So, we'll all be here supporting you and working with you to make this the best thing we can make it. So-
You're saying when we're 85, she's still gonna be here?
Sure she is, yeah. Tony will be in a retirement home, and Christina will be the community development director. We're gonna drive you there? We'll come visit you. We'll bring you out in your chair, your wheelchair, and you can come watch the hearings. I support, I would vote, I'm voting aye.
Bob?
Well, we have Dr. John McLaughlin in the audience, so I'm gonna talk to him. I think we all know-
The character that plays him.
The character, right. Well, kudos, Tony, and your staff. Great. And to this planning commission. It's an honor to be associated with you, even though once in a while, we question each other's positions. But, Tony, this has got to be the longest pre-app in the history of Oregon City. Well, Oregon finally gets to tell its story. And the applicant, I think, is going to be part of the storytelling process. And we look forward to working with you. I mean that from the bottom of my heart, because we've got, we're here because other people came before us. So what I look forward for you to do is to honor that in terms of the Riverwalk, and we get our falls back. We get our history back. So whatever you can do to follow through on that and give us whatever you can, whatever you can contribute to that, to bring that forth, it'll be greatly appreciated. That's, I think that's a contract. That doesn't have to be written. It's just between the spirit of Oregon City and the pioneers, and whoever you can find to get the money. So, anyway, what this does, what this plan does, it goes beyond just the site. It forces the city of Oregon City to turn the page and look at the big picture. Now, we're part of the region. We've identified ourselves on a national basis. To come visit us, we're open. Take a look at what we've done to restore the history of the Oregon Trail and the end of the Oregon Trail. That's meaningful. That's big-time stuff, folks. And when you do that, you're gonna change the character and identity of this community to the point where we're gonna have to deal with it. And that's what's gonna come before this commission, planning commission and the city commission, is to deal with all of those changes. And I understand where Denise is coming from. God bless her on fighting for her McLaughlin historic district. I would too. But those changes are inevitable. You know, 50 years ago, we didn't think we were gonna be here with all the changes that we had to deal with. So I'm gonna support this plan wholeheartedly. And thank you for your courage to jump into the unknown in this regard. Paul?
Is anybody familiar with Pascal's Triangle?
Yes.
Have you guys ever go to the Science Museum and you see all the little balls trickle down into the perfect distribution? Well, if you don't have all those little pegs in the right place, the balls don't get distributed in the right place. They're skewed on one side, and they're skewed on the other. And I always liken a good public involvement process to a good Pascal's Triangle, where everybody gets a chance to run through the maze, and there's a distribution of ideas that prescribe the perfect bell curve. And the things that are in the center of that bell curve are the things that you look at for deciding, making your decision on the process. And that's kind of the way I went about looking at this. I couldn't have done that unless I had a really great public process. And I think this was a good public process. A lot of people got a chance to talk about this and give their input. And I think it's important for me as a planning commissioner to listen to all that and try to process it and come up with the best answer. Hopefully, that's what I did. That's it.
Zach?
I would echo what my other commissioner said. A big thanks to Christina and Tony and all the partners and everyone that's contributed to this plan. It has really came together well. And two pieces that are really stuck with me throughout most of this process are legacy and the need for flexibility. And I think we've balanced that with, and still maintaining the conservation, the preservation, while contributing towards new development, which is gonna encourage economic interest in our area. So I'm happy to support this.
All right, Charles, bring it home.
Well, I, you know, I, again, I would agree with Zach. I echo the sentiments of the other commissioners. For me, this plan coming together, really, it feels really good. Because I moved to Oregon City in 1977, and there were two things that I looked at in this area that were somewhat disturbing to me. One was the Oregon Zoo. I had had great expectations for the Oregon Zoo, and it turned out to be such a disappointment to me the first time I came here. And I dreamed about the opportunity to do something to improve that zoo. And it turned out, I got to do a master plan for the zoo and do exactly that. And it just really was very fulfilling for me. And one of the first things that I observed about Oregon City was there, this wonderful falls there that you couldn't get close to. And you could look at it from the bluff, and if you were ambitious, you could walk across the little catwalk over the railroad track. But it felt like it was so distant and so restricted. And I always had this sense of yearning to be able to get close to the falls. And I even took the jet boat ride up the Willamette River, just so I had an opportunity to get real close to the falls. And so for me, seeing this plan come together is a tremendous sense of fulfillment. And I wish I had come up with the analogy that Paul came up with. I love that idea of how the public process filtered things out in such a dynamic way. And the thing I would challenge people to realize is that this whole process could have gone completely differently. And it's very possible that before the city got on board to put together a master plan, somebody could have bought the property, and this entire process could have gone in an entirely different direction. And we could be looking at somebody coming in and proposing to put another industrial use there, and cutting off the public and not allowing the public access that we all would like to see. So for me, I see the results of this plan as a tremendous asset to the city of Oregon City and the whole region. And I agree with what Bob was saying and Paul was saying, that this actually brings the identity of Oregon City back to the falls. That's the reason that the settlers originally stopped at Oregon City. I mean, it wasn't a coincidence that they happened to stop here. It was because of the falls. And so, for the last 40 or 50 years, public had no access to the falls unless you worked on the site. And I just, I feel that this is such a great opportunity. And I just hope that the developer is able to implement all the things that the people are dreaming about to allow that public access, because I think it'll be a wonderful place for Oregon City. And I definitely give kudos to the planning staff and to all the other participants in developing this plan. I think Ben and Walker Macy, they did a great job of just putting the meat to the bones here and giving us something that we can really work with. So I appreciate the whole process, and I definitely will support this. And I would call for the question.
I think the one thing is this sets the precedent for how it can be done. And if we don't get a bunch of awards for it, then I will, I will be very disappointed. Because in my career, I've not seen anything quite this robust that's worked as well.
No, it's, for me, it's a real honor to be a part of this whole process.
Don't forget about our, the people that were here before settlement, because the falls was very important to them. And I don't want that to go off the record, that our friends in the tribes have a-
Amen.
-legacy here that is both spiritual and physical. So, that's important. Excellent. Take the roll call.
Commissioner Hankin.
Aye.
Commissioner Espy.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Aye.
Commissioner Guile.
Proudly aye.
Commissioner Mayby.
I don't have a coin to flip for Amber, she'd know how, but, aye.
Commissioner McGriff.
Aye.
Chair Kidwell.
Aye.
Thank you very much. So, this will be in front of the city commission at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, October 15th, with a recommendation, a unanimous recommendation for approval from the planning commission. We appreciate it very much.
Mr. Higer, I'd like to say, thank you for having faith in us, and our flexibility back to you is our faith in you, so.
This is the process. We believe in it. And you'll be surprised what happens as we go through this. And all the comments, they're all questions. They're all, a lot matter of right in a lot of ways. You gotta, you know, I gotta trust you guys to make the right decisions and the decisions I make. But it's a given. You know when you're doing the right thing, and you'll know when you're not. So it's not that difficult. But it's gonna be a lot of fun, and you'll be surprised what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we do have another item on the agenda, but I would, I would like to take, if we can take a five-minute recess.
That's what I mean.
So, in other words, when I have those- 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 of approval, that if the applicant and the neighborhood association do not come to agreement within a certain time, following the planning commission's approval about the neighborhood agreement, that it would self-extinguish. In this case, we do not have that clause. So it's basically you have to do this. If you wanted there to be additional flexibility and have that clause in there, we should talk about that and add.
No. I think I'm confident that the current chairs of the neighborhood association will make contact with them and help them to understand what their obligation is. What my concern is more on their, on the applicant's end, and obviously, they're not here tonight, but there was a little bit of a disconnect between our process and what they were doing. And I just want to make sure that they, that they understand. I mean, in addition, I guess I would suggest, I'm not asking this to be put in part of the findings, but I think it would go a long way for them to get together with the neighbors so that they can understand what their construction schedule is, how it's going to impact them, what, so what's going to happen when they have a construction schedule? Because I would say that's probably one of the things that I find neighbors get most upset about, is that stuff starts happening, and equipment starts moving, and there's noise, and there's traffic, and, you know. And they don't, there's no communication. And just a little communication would go a long way to help sort of facilitate the relationship that, well, we're going to be parking our construction vehicles here, we're going to tell our workers not to park in front of your driveways, we're gonna, you know, we're going to start working at 7 o'clock, we're going to be doing this, you know, just so that people kind of know what's going on. And that.
There's going to be mud on the road until the end of the day, and then we'll sweep it away.
That, I mean, it just, you know, I, and I'm thinking just from a personal standpoint, that the current project that's going on in my neighborhood, I really have to commend the city and the contractor for making sure that the neighbors know what's going on and that, you know, there's somebody to contact at all. I mean, it just dissipated any sort of griping and moaning, because people knew what was happening.
Okay. Yeah, I've noted down some of those details, and I will mention them to the applicant.
They kind of treated with respect.
Exactly. So they don't feel like they've been, you know.
They deserve it. That's their neighborhood.
Yeah. And they, and, you know, these people want to blend in and be part of the neighborhood, and that just goes a long way to sort of help.
Well, that goes hand in hand with their expressed desire to be in that neighborhood for a long time and not, not just, they're not just going to build a building and go away. So the better relationship they have.
The better.
It's just going to make the whole thing much more successful.
Sure.
Other questions, comments for staff? If we have a motion to.
I move adoption of the findings for PC 14-114.
Aye, second.
Question?
Okay. I'm going to note these on the back here. Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Kidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hankin?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, so the last thing we have is communications. Tony?
Actually, the last thing we have is adjournment. We'll go to.
The last thing before adjournment.
Oh, okay.
Tony is important.
I'm just trying to think. I don't have anything that is overly pressing.
You mean, we don't have anything great to look forward to now?
Sign code. Collective cheer. Laura's back, so that's.
We're glad Laura's back, but the sign code, not so much.
I've got a question for Tony. Tony, you know, I think one of the issues in land use planning has always been public notice. Nobody told me. I was the last to get, you know, or it's just out of, what is it, 200 feet or 300?
Three, three.
Three, 301 feet. You know, I didn't get a public notice. And it seems to me, after what we've gone through here with the legacy plan, and the public notification and, and the identity of the goals and things of this nature, that it really just sort of came out of, as a, as a good experience, in terms of community involvement. Isn't there some way that we could come up with a, with a way of notifying the public, this is what the planning commission is considering, without jamming up the works ad nauseam, to the point of, you know, just dragging our feet, but getting the public involved, other than what we're doing now?
Anything's good. As big as.
How about a town prior type situation?
They get automatically just.
I know. Let's put out sandwich board signs on every.
We wouldn't be able to do that, because some of the businesses have too many already, and we wouldn't get a place for ours. That's true.
I think, I think we've seen a little bit. I hope it's something that we continue moving forward, both with Blue Heron and the South End Concept Plan.
Because this public involvement was really a milestone. I mean, I've never seen anything like it.
Was, was a big investment, both monetary and staff time, to go out to the community rather than say, come to us.
And they responded. They really did.
And so, you know, whether it's trying to utilize, you know, online surveys, but, you know, there's, there's a, there's a knack to that. There's a technique to that, to make it actually useful.
People just want to be heard.
Maybe there's a way to expand the boundary beyond 300 feet.
Yeah. I think the hard part is, you know, we don't have the ability to do that process for, for every application. It's more larger concept plans, or a comprehensive plan rewrite, or legislative actions that we do. It is tough. The return that we get when we mail stuff is embarrassingly low. Folks just don't respond.
Well, you know, realistically, most issues don't bring people out unless they feel like it personally affects them. So if it's not in my neighborhood, and I don't see the impact to me, I'm not going to be likely to respond. The difference with the Willamette Falls Legacy Project was, it was something that affects everybody in this whole area, not just in Oregon City, but the whole region. So I think the whole city could identify with that particular issue. So it was much easier to get people interested.
Well, I think, you know, I think we could certainly, you know, talk about this quite a bit, about what we did well, what we didn't do well when we went through that process.
Like a debrief.
But, you know, really, you know, there was a heavy investment on the public relations, the messaging, the multimedia approach that we took, and, you know, having that many partner, you know, it wasn't just us going out to the community in Oregon City. It was metro staff going out to the communities, metro electives, it was our electives, it was Clackamas County staff, and we were all given the same presentation with the same talking points. So it was very coordinated, and it wasn't an accident. But it is difficult. It is a, it's a very costly and time-consuming process, which, you know, when you're doing citywide actions, is completely appropriate. And I think it's a good model.
Tom.
Hi, Tom.
Come on up.
May I make a comment on that?
Since we're in the communication phase, I just want to share a thought. We'll let you communicate.
To follow up with Bob's thoughts. Tom O'Brien, Oregon City. It would be simple for staff to be able to notify the chairs of the neighborhood associations. There are only 12 of them. Everything that goes on in this city happens within one of those. And we, as chairs, know who within our community is interested in what's going on in our community. There were two events that took place in our neighborhood this last few months that we, as leaders in the neighborhood, were poorly or not informed about. One was a closure of a street for a period of three months. No one asked us who should be notified about that, and people actually living on that street did not receive official notice. People as much as a half a mile away did receive notice. We could have advised a little bit better where the postcards went in terms of letting people know. The other was the cellular tower proposal for a conditional use permit. They followed the law, they went 300 feet. But, believe me, the concerns about putting it on a school grounds went far beyond that 300 feet. And we're paying the price right now for it.
So we're still adjudication.
Well, I would, I would echo what you're saying, is that that would be the least expensive way of getting the word out to the most number of peoples, to notify.
The interested parties, anyway.
At least notify the chairs of those committees, and then from there, they can pass the word on.
Do you guys have a budget for mailing out letters? And if so?
Yes.
A very restricted budget, which gets cut every year.
Yeah. Well, I would, I would advocate for, you know, a line item to be, I mean, I don't know if I can really do that, but.
It's a difficult thing for a budget.
You have my support to get any kind of additional monies to communicate with, with folks.
The only exception to that, and I've run to it every time, and Christine Kozinski would be the first one to tell you, if you're just on the cusp of the city, and a lot of things that happen in the city impact those outside, she's in the Beaver Creek area, Holly Lane, and she'll beat the drum on this one, that they never get any notification, because they're outside the city limits, and there's so many people in the urban growth boundaries that don't get notified of these things, because they're.
I gotta, I gotta push back. I am sorry. We notify the hamlets.
Okay, good, because it used to be they did.
So let's, let's not, if we, folks, if we want to notify for 700 feet, let's change the code. Because it's very, very difficult for staff to say, we're going to do 300 on this one. But, you know, people might not like this one, so let's go 5 on this one. And, oh, this one's, this one's school problem. Let's go 8.
Okay. I appreciate it, and I apologize, but I remember during Park Place Concept Plan, it didn't go beyond that. And I remember Christine Kozinski pushing.
No, Park Place, it did go beyond that.
It did, Tom.
Not at the time.
No. The notice for that South End Concept Plan.
No, Park Place.
Oh. The notice for Park Place went out farther than you think, and the city still publishes in the paper. I mean, I'm not saying, but, you know.
Not everybody takes.
Interesting, sure knows where the newsletter is.
Then that's their problem. I mean, I take the paper, and I look to see what public notices are in there when I have a minute or two to look. So if people want to be.
It's a different debate for a different time, but.
I appreciate video work session on.
Thank you.
Any more communications?
I have a, I have a question for you. So for a while there, we were having, because, till our workload got crazy, but we were meeting with different groups in the city. Have we met with everybody that we were going to, we met with Natural Resources, we met with the city commission?
Did we meet with HRB?
We have not met with the HRB, I don't think.
Or Parks.
I thought we did.
The Historic Review Board?
I thought we did.
I don't, I think.
I'll go back and check.
Yeah, but anyway, I don't know who we have left.
Who do I, I'll have to go check.
But one of the groups that I would like us to meet with after we get done with a certain thing is, I really think we need to meet with the school board.
Yeah. Amen. Yeah.
Well, that'd be interesting.
Paula asked a question, and I'd like to respond to it. He asked if there was a budget for notifying our residents. There is a set budget, and because the mailing goes to a fixed number of residences, businesses, et cetera, if we do not use up the entire amount that is in there, then the next budget cycle, we get reduced. And we all know it costs X number per piece to mail out, and you're never going to hit your budget exactly on the nose. And so there isn't any way that we can do anything except continually be reduced. Many of us have had reduced down from five meetings a year to four meetings a year. I think the next reduction level will be down to three meetings a year. And that's one of the fallacies with how we budget.
The question, Paul, you have is, we get, the neighborhood associations get money to send out notices for their meetings. Other than that, there is no money. So if some big thing happened in, in Barclay Hills Neighborhood Association that was not within the budget for the newsletter, or whatever they mail out, there's no, there's no money for that. And we actually talked about that at a, at a meeting recently, and what we keep getting is not from the city. These are other public people said, well, everybody should be on email. Well, not everybody is. And I can tell you that when we stopped delivering our neighborhood newsletter, we got.
Multimodal notification.
We got so much gripes. And we haven't been able to do it. So we mail out a postcard, which is really a shame, because we were mailing out a four-page newsletter.
Yeah, I think you should, I think that's crazy. I think you should be able to get neighborhood enhancement grants, so that you can go for money to improve your neighborhood, build a sign.
Well, we need, we need to do neighborhood communication.
Do that kind of thing. You know, I, I don't know.
Well, I think, yeah.
I move the adjourners.
This is a subject for another work session at some point, so.
You're closing him down.
We are adjourned.
I apologize, Tony.